Are you ready, Kristin? Kristin, are you ready? Good evening. I call to order this regular meeting of the Campbell City Council this Tuesday, November 21st, 2023 at 7:30 PM. May we have roll call, please? Councilmember Lopez, Councilmember Sazola, Councilmember Furtado, Vice Mayor Landry, Mayor Bybee. Present. If you will all stand in the council chamber and I'll lead you in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. So this evening, we have no special presentations and proclamations, and we have no communications and petitions. So I will move to oral requests. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the city council on any matter not on the agenda. Persons wishing to address the council as requested but not required to complete a speaker's card. Speakers are limited to two minutes. The law generally prohibits. I was gonna do it after council. It's okay. Thank you. The law generally prohibits the council from discussion or taking action on such items. However, the council may instruct staff accordingly regarding oral requests. I have one member of the public that would like to speak on an item not on tonight's agenda, and that is Brandy Arlington. Want to come to the podium, please? And you have. Excuse me. Two minutes.
Good evening. I'm Brandy Arlington. I'm here representing at the Corinthian House Residence, Inc., which is at 250 Bud Avenue. And we're here to address the issue of speeding and traffic in our neighborhood. The loud sounds are keeping people awake. They're threatening pupils. They're threatening, literally threatening their lives. So we're here as a solution-based body. I brought several persons that are residents to Corinthian House to help us if you have any further questions about this whole situation. What we're looking for, in a nutshell, is signage, possible cameras at one of our, one or two of our stops at either end of Bud Avenue, and let's see, for an officer to be present, and the possibility of getting some speed bumps. So I do have a recording, if anybody's interested, of what we're listening to, literally from the time the police department closes to now. So if your ears are open to hear it, I will play it. But our main concern is that we're getting speeders that are blowing through the stop sign, which is directly in a cross street, right across from Corinthian House, and that is a senior living complex. And what's happening is it starts at 5:00 PM in the evening, and even sometimes during the middle of the day, and also goes up until about 2:30 in the morning. So there's been a number of accidents. Children have died, and older couples have died. We have a resident who was hit last December and is still in therapy for that. And the administrator of our building has also just recently been almost nearly hit, just crossing the street at dusk. So we'd like to urge the council to connect with whomever they need to possibly instill or install some speed bumps in an officer, camera, and signage, because there are schools. There's John Morgan Park. There's seniors. There's people with their dogs. They're being startled by these cars just blowing through the stop sign. So that it is, in a nutshell. Hopefully, we can get a result.
Thank you very much.
I'm Sandy Taylor, and I brought a picture of a school on Kennedy around the corner from where we live with signage that shows there's a school and that there's a stop sign coming, which neither of these signs are on Bud Avenue or California, which intersects with Bud where the school is. The park is actually on Bud. And I found this is one of the indicators of how fast you're going, which would be really cool for the people that speed through that intersection.
Thank you very much. And I want to thank the residents for coming to the council meeting tonight. And as I stated earlier, the city council is prohibited from discussing the matter because it's not on the agenda, but our staff is aware of the issues and the public works, and/or police staff will be reaching out to you in the next few days. Thank you. Councilmember Lopez?
I know we can't discuss. Can I ask a clarifying question? It's okay if the answer is no. I'm just wondering if this meeting that you're referring to on Bud Avenue specifically?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Coming from most likely San Tomas, the apartment complex next door at the other end of California, heading down Bud toward San Tomas and Sgressway.
And then the other direction that truly they run the stop sign from Winchester towards San Tomas.
Councilmember Furtado?
I've come myself. I just offered this as a suggestion. About a block from here, we have those flashing, continuous flashing stoplights that indicate it is a stoplight, and I know that that is an area that it may not be seen as a stoplight because you're kind of going down the road, and then all of a sudden it comes over. I just offered it as a suggestion to consider among the options if you might install or come back to us for approval.
Thank you. It's already there.
Okay.
It's already there. I'm sorry.
Yeah, so staff will follow up with you.
Okay. Thank you so much for listening.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to speak on this item? And I don't see anybody online. Okay, great. Thank you. The next item is our council announcements. City Clerk's Office is accepting applications for the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee and Historic Preservation Board. To apply or find out more about this committee, please contact the City Clerk's Office at 408-866-2117, or visit the city's website at campbellca.gov. Visit the Ainsley House this holiday season. The house will be decorated with the theme Christmas Cravings. Exciting events such as the holiday tea and tour, photos with Santa, and the holiday boutique await. For additional information, please visit campbellmuseums.com. The annual downtown Campbell Carol Light Celebration will be held at 4:00 PM on December 2nd. That's a Saturday. This is a free event for everyone to attend. The Campbell Community Toy Program is in need of all types of toys, books, soccer balls, and games. Toy collection bins have been placed at various locations, including Campbell City Hall, Police Department, Community Center, and the fire stations located on Union and Sunny Oaks. For additional information about this program, please visit campbelltoyprogram.com. And in observance of the Thanksgiving holiday, City Hall offices will be closed for business this Thursday, November 23rd, and Friday, November 24th. Police and emergency services will remain open. And now I'll defer to the city attorney for an announcement on executive session.
Yes. I'm pleased to announce that on November 16th, the Board for the Fair Political Practices Commission approved the stipulated settlement that this council unanimously approved at its prior meeting in the matter of FBPC case 2017-00125, the terms of which are set forth in the stipulation, which is on file with the city clerk and available to the public for review.
Thank you, Bill. We'll next move to the consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered by the city council to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a request is made by a member of the city council, city staff, or a member of the public. Any person wishing to speak on any item on the consent calendar should ask to have the item removed from the consent calendar prior to the time the council votes to approve. If removed, the item will be discussed in the order in which it appears. Are there any council members, staff, or members of the public that wish to pull an item from the consent calendar? Vice Mayor Landry?
I don't want to pull an item, but I just want to say how exciting it is to have our RFP going out for our climate action.
And I want to verify we don't have anybody online for. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar items 1 through 6. There's a motion by Vice Mayor Landry and a second by Councilmember Lopez to approve the consent calendar items 1 through 6. Roll call, please. Councilmember Lopez, Councilmember Sazola, Councilmember Furtado, Vice Mayor Landry, Mayor Bybee. Aye. Tonight, we have no public hearings and/or introduction of ordinances, and we have no new business items, so we'll move to unfinished business. Item 7, resolution approving an agreement with Nino and Moore in an amount not to exceed $177,428 to provide materials, testing, and inspection services for the Measure O Police Operations Building Number 23-RR and Library Renovations Number 23-SSS projects. And our presenter is Todd Capurso, Public Works Director. Welcome, Todd.
Very much, Madam Mayor. Good evening. Good evening to all the council as well. We have talked at length lately about all things related to Measure O, whether it be library or police building, or in this case, it will actually touch both projects. So I think the council is well aware that on many capital projects, especially structural ones, there's a great need to have materials testing and special inspections performed. And what you have before you this evening is a recommendation to enter into an agreement with a company called Nino and Moore for that very purpose in the amount of $177,000 and some change to perform that on both projects. So that dollar amount is the proposal for both projects. Furthermore, we are also recommending a 20% contingency, which is higher than normal because we do want to maintain some measure of agility and nimbleness in the event that the needs on either project change somewhere along the way. But as I mentioned, this is a critical need on both projects. We did conduct an RFP process in conjunction with our construction management firm, Griffin Structures. We evaluated several proposals. The recommendation is to go with this company, Nino and Moore. They are local. Their cost was competitive. Their hourly minimum per visit was two hours as opposed to three or four that we saw in other proposals. But interestingly enough, we had allocated resources for this type of work on both projects. And as you will hear on the next item, as we're starting to get proposals in for both special inspections, materials testing, and utility work, we're able to put more specificity to our dollar amounts. And in this particular case, this represents significant savings compared to what we had allocated on both projects. So just looking at the recommended contract amounts, along with the 20% contingency, we're projecting that this will save approximately $85,000 on the library project as opposed to what we had budgeted, and upwards of $300,000 on the police project, upwards of what we had budgeted. So again, we are recommending the higher-than-average, higher-than-normal contingency. That is the process that we went through. It will benefit both projects, particularly an urgent need, as I think many of you are well aware that the library is now under construction. And so there is a need to have this service online in a relatively timely manner. That concludes what I have to say about this. But other things on Measure O to be continued.
Thank you, Todd. Are there any questions on this item? If not, I'll open it up to the public. If anyone wants to speak on it. And I don't see anyone online. I will bring it back to council for discussion and/or motion. Question? Councilmember Lopez?
Todd, just really appreciate the foresight and the work here in achieving those cost savings, such as all matters on this project.
Someone wanted to vote for motion. Councilmembers Sazola?
Sure. Okay. Make the motion. That the city council adopt a resolution approving an agreement with Nino and Moore to provide materials, testing, and inspection services for the Measure O Police Operations Building Number 23-RR and Library Services for the Measure O Police Operations Building, wait, I forgot that, sorry. Renovations Number 23SS projects in accordance with the policies and procedures specified in Campbell Municipal Code, CMC 3.20.091, semi-colon, wow. Two, approving the combined contract amount of $177,428 plus an additional 20% contingency amount of $35,485 for any service modifications required to accommodate each project's construction schedule. And three, authorizing the city manager to execute said agreement as specified in Campbell Municipal Code, Section 3.20.100.
Thank you. There's a motion by Councilmember Sazola and second by Vice Mayor Landry to approve the staff recommendation. Roll call, please. Councilmember Lopez, Councilmember Sazola, Councilmember Furtado, Vice Mayor Landry, Mayor Bybee. Aye. Item 8 is to approve and award a construction contract to Lathrop Construction Associates, Incorporated, for the Measure O Police Operations Building Project Number 23-RR. And our presenter is Todd Capurso, Public Works Director.
Thank you again, Madam Mayor. So it is all things Measure O this evening. This time, we're going to be discussing the police building project without going back through the old history of Measure O, which I did for you two weeks ago. We'll try to pick it up where we left off. So revisiting our discussion from November 7th. At that meeting, we did provide a relief to mobile construction at that meeting. So that was a request they had, which was due to a bid error. We had a discussion on that, and we let that one go. And so our discussion was largely around awarding the contract to the second lowest bidder, which was deemed the lowest responsive bidder, which is also Lathrop, which is the library contractor as well. The council direction, as we understood it at that evening, was to look at ways to fully fund the project, keeping the revocable items largely intact, and to bring a variety of funding sources to the project to help close the funding gap. And since that time, we have revisited both the scope and some potential funding sources. So first of all, regarding the scope, we did look at the proposed award scenario, and we are recommending moving forward with the construction of the new building and renovating the existing site or existing space down below and the associated site improvements. We are recommending at this time that we do remove the construction of the trash enclosure, which was revocable item number one, as it is not critical to keep the project on track. It can be combined with a later project down the line, most likely the parking lot project, which will have to be addressed at the conclusion of the other two projects. We are also not recommending the award of the ad alternate, as you know, because that was an EV charging station with a solar canopy and battery backup. And the proposed bid amount on that greatly exceeded our grant amount. So we are recommending removal of that and reallocation of those funds at some point. And then also regarding the expenditure plan, we have updated the expenditure plan to reflect the savings that we have kind of picked up along the way as we are getting these new proposals in. So we have the new updated expenditure plan, which is in the report, does recommend a different figure for plan review. There's a savings there. Again, there's a savings from the removal of the proposed removal of the trash enclosure portion and the associated contingency with that. And we do have new numbers on special inspections and materials testing from the previous item. Thank you very much. And we have real numbers on proposed utility work. So all the changes with regard to scope kind of reduce our overall project expense by $417,000. That still leaves a considerable gap that we need to fill on what I'll refer to as the revenue side, which is the source of funds. So we are proposing a few that you did see November 11th without changes. We are proposing the reallocation of $3.7 million from the library project to the police project. We are proposing $1.3 million in unallocated contingency from the shared cost, from the shared cost project over to the PD project. And we are also recommending the allocation of $1.5 million in Measure O interest earnings to the project. Those three are exactly as what you saw on November 7th. What is, I won't say different, but what has a little more specificity since that discussion is that we are also recommending the allocation of $342,000 of additional Measure O interest earnings that we anticipate through the end of fiscal year '24, which is about seven months away. And we are recommending the allocation of $939,000 worth of ARPA funds. That number may seem arbitrary, but that number was actually chosen because it matches what the council had allocated to the fiscal year '23 operating budget to help the city close the budget gap. We did not actually use those funds in the fiscal year '23 operating budget. So our assumption was that since you'd allocated that number once before, you would be comfortable with that number once again, but that is subject to discussion. And then to finally close the gap with regard to funding, we are recommending an additional $512,000 of operating budget savings that came from fiscal year '23, not related to ARPA. So that is true general fund savings. And then lastly, there will be a recommendation to remove the $197,000 or so that came from SBCE to fund the ad alternate, because we're not recommending that portion of the project, and we would be reallocating that to another project in the future. So with all those proposed changes in mind, staff is recommending the award of the construction contract to Lathrop Construction in the amount of $29,454,000 plus a 10% contingency, $2,945,400, and authorization to execute change orders up to that amount, and authorization for the finance director to prepare all those budget adjustments, which I just walked you through, and they have been prepared into a consolidated attachment C, which reflects, believe it or not, all seven of those on one document. And that is where we land. So that is our recommendation. We are happy to discuss changes to scope, changes to funding. That is where we are at this moment. Thank you very much.
Okay, Todd. Are there any questions at the council? Vice Mayor Landry?
We're removing the solar panel, the EV stuff. Are we leaving the conduit underground so it's potentially out later?
Yes, we are.
We are taking care of that.
Correct.
My understanding, from the library, because on our look ahead for our next agenda, we're looking at hourly increase to the library architect. So my understanding of the money, the 3.7, that that did set aside the money for the next agenda item, that the fee increase.
Yes, it did. Yes, we have taken that into consideration.
And based on the history that I've seen in the last seven years, wouldn't you say that we've usually not used up all the contingency?
We typically do not.
What would you say, what percentage, like 2% left over?
2% of the contingency, or do you mean 2% of the 10%? I mean, I, yeah. I would like to think that if we're fortunate, you know, maybe we have a quarter of the contingency, perhaps more. So, you know, optimistically, I would like to think that we would have half the contingency left. That may be too optimistic, you know, going into these large projects. But if we were to save a quarter of the contingency on this project collectively, we'd have in excess of $2 million to then move forward with a parking lot, trash enclosure project. It's, I don't want to get too far ahead of us, but if things go well, we could be looking at seven figures or so of unspent contingency.
That's what I wanted to hear. Thank you. Councilmember Lopez?
I just, I want to understand what's being proposed for the SBCE grant a little bit more.
Yes.
And, you know, just like you're saying, not to get too far ahead of ourselves. Are you saying that would, we would then be looking, if we followed the recommendations in this report, at using a non-measure O project? The funds?
Yes. We'd be looking at, that $197,000 was actually part of a non-competitive grant. It's almost like a population-based allocation going back about two or three fiscal years. And when we had first considered where to place that grant allocation, we did look at the PD project. We looked at the community center, and we looked at the service yard, and we did some level of analysis of all three sites. And the next best location, looks like it would probably be the service center, because we are going to be transitioning to some electric vehicles and some plug-in hybrids. So having a standalone EV charging station there. We've already run that concept by our contacts at SBCE. They are receptive to that. It's not out of alignment with what some of our neighboring cities have done, particularly Gilroy, I think is the model that we'd be trying to follow. So we do want to capture those funds. We want to put them to good use and use them in a way that benefits the city. The timing doesn't work on the PD project necessarily at this time, but we are setting ourselves up for a future charging station or charging stations there. So that is our proposal.
Great. And you answered all my follow-up questions, and your answers, I appreciate.
Councilmember Furtado?
I have the answer to this already. I just wanted to confirm it for the public. In this process, of course, you'll have to relocate a number of parking areas. And my understanding that that level of detail has already been worked out in terms of the other available space around here, parking garages, the, not so much the corporate area, but the community center, and that a number of the official vehicles currently parked in the gravel lot will be moved over to the community center. Individuals on staff who anticipate using a car in the morning would simply drive their private car there, pick up the city car at that time, and so on. And then all the requisite signage directing people and so on is already, all of those expenses have been taken into consideration and are paid for with Measure O funds already as part of.
Yes and no. So we do have a plan. The plan will have multiple phases to it, right? There's not a single parking plan where we flip the side all of a sudden and everybody parks at a different. You know, with the construction of the library. You know, with the construction of the library, there's, there's very little for us to do with parking. As the PD project moves forward, there will be a variety of, of change points in the parking plan. And the first phase of that project is a very small phase, but it's a very impactful phase where there's a sewer line constructed in our A number one parking lot out in front. And we'll close this lot down initially while that, while, while that storm sewer line is, is put in place to drain to the south as opposed to the north. And then that portion of the lot will, will reopen and then we will lose what, what we call the PD lot up here on the, on the northwest corner. And that's the, at the point where we will enact a combination of alternate sites that will range from partial use of what's current or what was formerly the library lot, the gravel lot, the first street garage, and some city vehicles will be located to off-site both the community center and at the service yard. And that's, that's in an effort to help minimize the number of vehicles that are parked here at any one time. That changes over time. I will tell you that the most difficult part of the, of the phasing plan comes in about two years when the building is largely complete and then we take the rest of PD out of commission to flip PD over to their new building and we renovate the old one. That is a particularly difficult period for the parking plan. And there may be very little parking on site for that last phase. But we will preserve what little parking there is for city hall visitors and, and customers. But employees during that phase will be largely parking offsite. But again, that happens in approximately two years.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Landry?
Follow-up question with the parking. Right out here on the street, there's no time limit, correct, on these parallel spaces?
Correct.
Will staff be allowed parking?
We had not considered that as staff parking where we, what we had looked at for staff parking was across the street in the, in the strip. We call the strip. It's basically the property that follows the same frontage as the historical museum all the way back. And we may capture that, so to speak, for staff parking from eight to five. But then it would be largely available to the public on after hours and on weekends, much like this lot is now.
So I would look at putting time limit out here on the street. Otherwise, it's going to be very hard to enforce staff not parking.
That's, that's a good point. That may be a way for us to accommodate visitor or customer parking. That's a good suggestion.
Especially when the sewer line is cut through.
Yes.
So I would add to your complex plan.
Yes.
Signing and getting rid of the full all-day park.
Thank you for that.
I'll then go to the public and ask if there's any comments from anyone in the chamber. And I don't see anybody online, so I'll bring it back to council for discussion and our motion. Councilmember Lopez?
Yeah, I think I'll be pretty brief. I'm fully supportive of what's being proposed. I really appreciate the thoughtfulness and, and the specific amounts. I, 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 the discussion made me feel much better about losing the, the, the charging spot, especially the vice mayor's question of, about the, the undergrounding the utility hookup. So, so, you know, it's, it's, it's great. I think that really takes care. Well, it would be great to have as part of this project. I think the way we're leaving options open and still holding true to the intent that, you know, really takes away my, my concern. So I'm fully supportive at this point.
Councilmember Fertado?
Make a few sort of summary comments. I know we've discussed this over a long period of time, a variety of questions, workshops, et cetera. We've taken input, testimony from the public and what have you, and certainly gotten their opinion on all of that. As, as you know, initially I had a number of reservations about certain aspects of it. One of which it, it is still somewhat of a reservation for me. I felt that this project turned out to be much larger than was anticipated. And I didn't feel that the voters were adequately informed about the decision to later commit measure O funds for the renovation of the current police space. But the city attorney has advised that he believes that it is within the safe scope in terms of proper notification. And, and then so I had some reservations about moving ahead with the funding because we are over budget. And I, I respect the comments that all of you have made about that and more confidence about moving ahead with the, with the entire project. I do respect that. As I look at the funding that is being proposed for the over budgeted items, roughly eight point three million dollars. Most of that, of course, is coming from measure O funds, which of course are restricted to measure O projects, obviously. There's still a hope. I think that some of those will come through. The, the one that seems still a little shaky to me is if transferring all of the money from the library project, of which I assume and hope that that will be a safe thing to do. We just never know about any other contingencies. I think there are a number of safety factors kind of built into this. But you, you know, I make no apology for raising these questions because, and for your comments and for the public's comments. Because I think, you know, we have many obligations in this city. And of course, police service is a very important one. I think it's very important to separate the work of the police department and their things that they do versus the space and try to somehow say that in order to support their work, we have to fund whatever space is asked for. I see a separation of that. I mean, the police is already doing outstanding work, I think we agree, in now very inadequate space. And so they're going to be provided much more space, which is good. But we have other obligations as members of the council to the public. We, of course, are required to provide fire service, which we do do it. We used to have our own fire department. Then it became obvious that the number of staff required, fire staff required to report to a fire was much larger than we were able to support ourselves. And we were one of the first cities in California, I think the first city in Northern California certainly, that provided paramedic service. Paramedics, of course, have a higher level of training and can do much more in the field. And we have insisted on that since, since many, many years ago. And we decided to contract with the fire service, which we do, which is not an inexpensive contract. And so we, but the point is while central, while county fire does provide personnel and the upgraded equipment, which is extremely expensive these days for us to have afforded as a city. We nevertheless still own the buildings and the real estate and both of the fire stations that we own need some work in the future that we need to think about because they need to be improved too. They haven't had any work done to them for a number of years. So that is a future expense that we have to consider. And then if you just look at all the other obligations we have, take a look at planning. State and federal laws regarding housing and affordability have increased considerably, which fall on cities. And we are, of course, then hiring a new person in planning to assist with our affordable housing requirements. And we're also hiring another person to deal with unhoused persons, both of which are very good. I'm just saying. We need to fund those positions in order to meet our obligations. We are going to be hiring or hiring a climate specialist, which is important. You know, that's one of our priorities, but those things cost money too. In the area of public works, we have a lot of obligations, not only to fix clavels, which is a very basic requirement that every city has, but you know, there are paving requirements. There are a lot of extra expenses that we're paying for now at the community center, including the new gas lines, which turn out to be very expensive. So there are a lot of public works expectations and expenses that we have to keep in mind for that requirement of the city. With respect to recreation and community services, the public expects us to provide those kind of services and keep our fields appropriate and provide for a number of classes and do the good things that we're doing there. Community and recreation services and arts and senior services, all of which are extremely important. So we have a lot of obligations and that's why I think, you know, in the discussion, considering, you know, certain cautions and precautions are, are, are appropriate. I said, I say all this because in, in summary, I, I am going to support the project as proposed and I think it'll move ahead. Seems like most of the safety factors that we could plan for at this point in time have, have been planned for. The staff has likewise provided a number of answers to a lot of questions that have come up. So I just wanted to provide that summary and I say that not only because you, not that you don't already know it, of course, that the staff doesn't already know it. But sometimes the public may lose sight of the obligations of the city and why we have questions about doing this or that or not doing this or that. Because we have to kind of balance our responsibilities and provide for a lot of things. The state, I've said before, is one, is very free to pass whatever they want to and then they go off and we're the ones that have to enforce it unfortunately. Those are my comments and I thank you for introducing me in this rather lengthy comment.
Thank you, councilmember. Vice Mayor Landry?
Yeah, five years this month, we went on the ballot in two thousand and eighteen to get this approved by our community. And I, the, the city and I were talking beforehand and we all remember what it took to get this approved. Walking, doing all kinds of stuff and friends in the library and everything it took. I guess councilmembers that, there's four now that have left that were part of this whole process. Me being one of them. I asked the questions about the contingency because what I see is based on our history, that I've been here for seven years, we have not used up all ten percent. It's very traditional to leave that set aside for, you know, what you may dig up or not dig up or whatever. But what I'm looking at is five and six on the list of the operating, the operating budget. And if we could save a million dollars or a million five out of that contingency just on PD, we're not going to have to use the ARPA funds and we're going to be able to put it back into the operating surplus budget. So I, I, that's great. And that's why I was asking these questions and about the design for the library, you know, are we really covering our bases here? And, you know, it's like having a baby. You go through the whole pregnancy and it's like, yay, we have a baby. And I feel like that's where we're at tonight. I asked the chief, you want to go out and celebrate, only to find out he's not here. But I know he's listening. So I just think it's great that we've gotten here. It's, you know, not been the easiest path of travel, but we've gotten here and I think it's great. I do have a question, Todd. If we have any money left over in the contingency, what do we spend it on if we have to? Do we use it for measure O, right? Would that be a great position to be in? I don't have the answers. It's a rhetorical question. You know, would that be great that we have to figure out what to do with some extra money and that we still have the ability to do something to city hall, right? That, that could be a potential. So I think right now it's really managing tightly this job, really controlling change orders. I mean, that, that's really where we could save a million, a million five. That would be ideal. And so I just encourage our staff and our construction manager to really hold the reins pretty tightly on this and really look at change orders. That's what can really kill you on the job. So I'm looking forward to our groundbreaking.
Thank you. Councilmember Lopez or Scazola?
Just going to say, I think everyone's convinced tonight. We're amazing. Thank you, Dan, for, as you call it, lengthy discussion. But no, I, I agree. It needs to be said every once in a while, you know, just for the public to be aware of all, all the responsibilities that we have. And also, yeah, I can only imagine Susan, after all these years, yeah, it's been five years and I think that it's well worth saying that we are, we are getting this done after five years.
Thank you. And I just want to say to councilmember Fertado, I appreciate your, your comments. I know that it's a, a bit challenging when a previous council has made decisions and then you're, you come on and our new councilmember comes on and tries to get up to speed and may or may not necessarily agree with the decisions that were made up to this point. But I, I do think that the, the bond measure itself, fifty million dollars, and I've said it before, is, is a limited pot of money when you're trying to build a police facility as well as, as, as a library. And I know that our staff has worked diligently trying to do the best for the city and, and come up with a, a plan, even though we are over budget, trying to cobble together surplus funds and, and identify additional sources of our revenue. So I, I think from that perspective, I feel confident. I, I've supported the project all along. I personally was disappointed when I learned that the new building wasn't going to encompass all of the police activity and police work that they need to do and that it was going to be split between two buildings. But that said, I think, again, the project has come, come to a good, good point and, and I'm supporting it tonight. If that, if there are no further comments, I'll entertain a motion to.
I'd be honored to make the motion. I'd make the motion, excuse me, that the city council adopt a resolution to, one, award the construction contract for the measure O police operations project number twenty-three R R to Lathrop Construction Associates Incorporated. And two, approve the construction contract in the amount of twenty-nine million, four hundred and fifty-four thousand plus a ten percent contingency of two million, nine hundred and forty-five thousand, four hundred. Three, authorize the city manager to execute said agreement as specified in the Campbell Municipal Code, section three, point twenty, point one hundred. Four, authorize the city engineer to negotiate and execute contract change orders up to and within the allocated construction contingency. And five, authorize the finance director to prepare a budget adjustment necessary to award the project's construction contract and fund the costs associated with this plan expenditure.
Thank you. So we have a motion by Vice Mayor Landry and a second by councilmember Scazola to approve the staff recommendation. Roll call please. Councilmember Lopez?
Aye.
Councilmember Scazola?
Aye.
Councilmember Fertado?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Landry?
A wholehearted yes.
Mayor Bybee?
Aye. And thank you to the team. To everyone that's worked on the project and to our consulting team as well. Thank you very much. We'll move on to council committee reports and we'll start with councilmember Fertado. Do you have any items to report?
We recently had another meeting of the Silicon Valley Regional Interoperability Authority. We have been looking for a long time and we're still finalizing a proposed plan to increase the commitment of funds to a special reserve fund for future replacement of a lot of the equipment, which doesn't not have to be done right away, but it does several years from now. But in order to make that possible, the best thing would be to gradually ask, well, require, but I don't need to phrase it that way, each of the contributing cities within the county, which are all the cities, by the way, to, to advance a certain amount of funds each year on an increasing basis to meet those long-term reserves. We, we think we can devise a plan that will be acceptable to the cities. We continue to study the measure. The executive director will be calling on the city's association and other regional bodies within our county to to propose various solutions and to get feedback. So that when it comes back to us again, we hopefully will make an appropriate decision as to how we're going to do that. It will happen many years down the road, but we have to prepare for it now. As you know, electronic equipment changes considerably in some of the options we might have. Then we also had a meeting of the, so of the county's emergency operation area council. It was in fact formally sworn in finally to this council, but we had several reports regarding the current status of emergency preparedness. The county is in very good shape. I, I think what, what needs to be done is provide more education and support to various cities because there's sometimes a misinterpretation that somehow the county is going to solve every city's problem. Whereas every city has to solve their problem as best they can. And when the emergency occurs, if they can't solve something, then they call upon the county for support. And if the county can't do it, then they call upon the governor's office of emergency services, which almost all. which almost always can provide a solution. So all of that is good so far. We have new rules coming out in stormwater management and especially in the solid waste. The new contract will be going to affect this next year, but it will be gradually phased in with a number of educational requirements on the part of West Valley Collection and Recycling to advise customers about the changes in the contract and what that will mean. So word of, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Landry. Councilmembers Scazzola?
Let's see, chronological order here. Okay. So first up, I attended County Supervisor Semidians brunch event. Great bacon there, first of all. And there was, it was interesting, there was a panel of guest speakers and it was basically about tech being targeted. And so something that was often brought up during this panel was misinformation and disinformation. It was repeatedly brought up as one of the things that, that are seen as a problem, I guess. It seems that both sides of the aisle have been targeting big tech. And this is one of the, the reasons they both have, you know, differences of opinions on how to deal with that. But it was interesting that even the panel itself didn't really have any solid solutions. Or not that I, anyways. So there was a little bit of some talk about possible regulations, but of course that brings up its own problems. So it's a very complicated issue. And this is obviously just my own personal opinion, but I think that, you know, we really need to emphasize education to our children, how to, you know, identify information or misinformation, disinformation, factual things, just, just allow our children themselves to, you know, grow, to learn how to identify these things. I think that's one of the most obvious ways of helping with this. But, but it's also going to take trust being reestablished. You know, there's just such disillusionment, I've mentioned this multiple times, I've been up in the dice, that, you know, the fact that I didn't even have a challenger, you know, to sit up here. And it's because of this disillusionment and people just believe that their representatives, oh, you, you're just a politician, you're just a liar, I don't believe a word you say, you know. So I think it's really up to us as well to make sure that whatever we're putting out there is 100% accurate. So I just wanted to make that comment too. It was very interesting and really great event. Next up, obviously we're all at the library groundbreaking. That was amazing seeing so many people turned out, so many, it was, it was great. It was, it was a real, you can just feel the excitement in the air, you know. Great to see Liz Givens was out there as well and, you know, just people who also helped bring about the library. Let's see, what else? Ah, the lovely Veterans Day event that we held out on the green near the memorial. And I, I found out that Dan's birthday is Veterans Day. Like, of course he had to join the army, it had to be, right? So that was also really nice. And I, oh, I want to give a shout out to Delmar Marching Band, like they were, they really put on a show. That was really nice. Also attended the Campbell Veterans Memorial Foundation Dinner fundraiser. Such a nice, nice event. I have never attended it before. I'll be going back year after year after attending. And there was a really, the best part for me was hearing the, the veterans who actually, you know, received these scholarships and, and the veteran, I wish I remembered his name offhand, but, but he told this really great story, a little bit gory at times actually, but as I'm sure a lot of veteran stories are. But, but he, you know, he really emphasized how the, if he had not received those funds from the scholarship, that he doesn't know if he would have been able to graduate college. And like, that really touched my heart. It was really, it just really showed the importance of our Campbell Veterans Memorial Foundation and what they do. So I, I loved attending that event. Next up, Silicon Valley Clean Energy. We, we, this is kind of big news, we kind of, it is big news. We appointed our current chief operating officer and director of power resources, Monica Padilla, to serve as SVC's new CEO beginning this April. She's not only highly respected by the board, but throughout the energy industry. So SVC is like in really good hands, passing the torch well deserved, very exciting. Oh, also we authorized a new 100 megawatt wind project, delivering more of that good old amazing clean energy to our customers. See, then I also have, let's see, VTA Policy Advisor Committee. I just wanted to mention one Measure B improvement that happened fairly recently, I think a couple of months back, but it's going to really help the South County area. There's now a fourth weekday train to and from Gilroy. So that's going to, that's actually really good news there. It's my understanding there used to be one and they're reintroducing it post-COVID and it's back on the tracks. And that'll definitely be good since we're especially encouraging more people to use public transit. So that was some good news. I also would encourage people to just read over the Valley Transportation Program. Like just, there, there are so many projects out there right now, you know, on the books, getting prepared, already in progress. But, but yeah, so I would definitely advise the public to take a look for themselves. And that's it for me.
Thank you. Councilmember Lopez?
Thank you. I also, I think along with all of us here, had the pleasure of attending the library groundbreaking and the Veterans Day event on the green, which was really lovely. Also had a meeting of the VTA Board of Directors. And one very interesting item was actually an information item, which is going to get back in a study session, but about early contours of a potential valid measure to fund transit that in its current form, the way it's, it's being talked about, would be regional in scope, but there's a lot of questions over, you know, does that make sense for Santa Clara County? And if it does, what, what kind of conditions would be needed for, for us to want to sign on? A lot of further discussions that, that are going to have. VTA is not in some of the same financial straits that some of our agencies, peer agencies around the area are, such as BAR and Uni and others, and Caltrain. But of course, we all collaborate, those systems serve multiple writers. And so be across different counties. And so it'll be a complex discussion and we'll be talking more about that clearly over the coming year. Another, also had a meeting of the board directors for the Bay Area Air Quality Management District. And we did a huge overhaul, literally rewriting our entire administrative code, top to bottom. Not an easy undertaking. I was quite involved in that as a member of the Finance and Administration Committee that helped put that together. So, so a big step for our agency that really is going to, I think, put us in better shape going forward and, and just be able to follow some, some best practices. I also had the honor of speaking actually to graduation for VTA. We have a partnership with Mission College, really first in, in the nation and still a leading program called the Joint Workforce Investment that has been going on for over 20 years. And started to train, when, when someone is hired at VTA, they actually become enrolled a student, receive credits from Mission College, very innovative partnership. And that helps us ensure that we, we have the, the next generation, we're actively building the skills and investing our employees. So very exciting and I had the chance to help celebrate those employees who were outgoing. So those are the major ones for me.
Thank you. And I, I've said earlier in the announcements, I mentioned the Campbell Community Toy Program. And I just wanted to put in a plug for those that don't know it. The Chamber of Commerce really is the sponsoring organization that runs that program. And there's a couple of opportunities for volunteer events. And I would encourage the council, if you have some time, to donate some time. The two events, one is they, they are in need of volunteers to sort and bag and distribute the, the toys. And they do that over kind of a week-long process. You don't have to sign up for every day, but there's different volunteer slots. And then also they're having a fundraising holiday mixer on December 7th at 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. And the proceeds of that go towards the Campbell Toy Program. So it's really something that's worthwhile and I would encourage the council, if you have some time, to look into that. And I think you can go online at the Chamber of Commerce and sign up for, for both events. And I, I want to also close in saying that both Councilmember Lopez and I attended the Interfaith group, religious group, Sunday at the Mormon Church in San Jose, where they had a Thanksgiving celebration and invited all different members of the religious sectors in Campbell. And we were invited guests. So thank you for inviting me, Councilmember Lopez. And it was a very, very nice ceremony. And I'll defer to you on the last comment.
Sure. We're, we're going to be adjourning this meeting in honor and memory of Rob Cordway. I have the sad responsibility, but you know, also honor of saying some, some words about him. Rob Cordway, for those who didn't know, was a commissioner on our Historic Preservation Board. And I first met him about three years ago. And, you know, I, I don't often talk about a political party up here, but it was in the midst of a very contentious national election. And he reached out to me, you know, at that time, I, I was trying to introduce myself and put myself out there. And he reached out saying, hey, you know, we're, we're from different political parties, but I think I, I see in you the values that I care about as, as an American and, and believe in as part of our democratic system. And so, you know, let's sit down and talk and, and, you know, just wanting to learn what we're about. And what he ended up saying to me after a number of conversations was, you know, there are some things that just decisions you'll probably make that, that I'll never agree with, but you know, I respect your values and where you're coming from and that, that's what's important. And again, in a very difficult time for our nation, I think that speaks a lot to, one, his character and to what I really think is the best about the Campbell community. That I, I think, like the kind of values that he espoused in, in that instance, are things that are deeply held by, by many of our residents. And so after, you know, and shortly after that, he had some time on his hands. He was looking for ways to get more involved. And he was a lifelong resident, by the way, of Campbell and deeply loved this community. And he was looking for ways to get more involved. So I said, hey, you know, we have a, and I knew he was a huge history buff, as we both are. And I should say, he, he had, you know, he's a million things on his mind. And every time, we, we can never meet often enough because we always had a backlog of dozens of topics to talk through. And when we met, we'd add dozens more, so we never actually got, got ahead. But we'd meet, and so I knew he was a huge history buff, American history, as we both are. So I said, hey, we've got this opening on our Historic Preservation Board. I think, you know, we could do, do a good job. He leaped at the opportunity. I think that very same day submitted his application, reached out to, to our, our staff. I, I remember making a comment about this gentleman who reached out, was very enthusiastic. So we interviewed him, I, and nominated him to be on the Historic Preservation Board. And I, you know, again, he, he was always, I, his mind was just always working. And he had a very successful career in the private sector and banking and finance, but also just, just was this huge history buff. And so I think was able to bring a lot of that, that skills, those skills and experience to his work on the Historic Preservation Board. And I think just a few months after, and, and this is so typical of just his enthusiasm and energy and ambition and services community, that he ended up helping us with, with our previous council, if you remember, came up and did this huge, this presentation, very in-depth and in detail. And clearly there is much more work that got into it. But literally essentially an overhaul of our code around Historic Preservation Board that I, I think just speaks, you know, immediately, he could jump in and have that, that, that kind of impact. He, he, you know, you mentioned the Thanksgiving service. What, what I would like to add is that he was a very active community member, volunteer and, and member of the congregation at the Church of Latter Day Saints, Strawberry Ward Park. And as, at, at the, a couple of meetings ago at that Interfaith group, you know, some, some leaders there came up and said, you know, hey, you know, Rob, he, he's always talking about his volunteer work with, with Campbell and, and your work together. So I know it's deeply meaningful, it's something, he definitely had an impact because that presentation, that work and, and the policies that we passed as a result live on, I think, speak to his, his impact and dedication in a short time. But I know that we as a community and as a city and as the staff, everyone here, had an impact on him and his work, although it's all too brief with our city. I know it's something that brought a great deal of meaning to his life. He survived by, by a brother who I knew, I know he loved dearly and spoke of often. He was the police chief and holster and, and he was a big supporter of, of our police and often spoke, spoke about his brother. But, you know, I think someone who, like all of us, had, had his ups and downs, but lifelong member of this community, grew up here, left an impact. And I, I, I know we'll be missed. And I'll, I'll just say for everyone else, you know, I always thought, we always had those dozens of topics to catch up on. I always assumed and hoped there'd be the chance for, for that next conversation. And unfortunately that, that won't be the case. So I won't be missing it. I, I thank you for this opportunity to adjourn in this memory.
Thank you, Councilmember Lopez. I appreciate your thoughtful comments and insight about somebody that's life was cut, cut pretty short because he's pretty young. So with that, I will adjourn the meeting in memory of Historic Preservation Board Member, Rob Cordway. And everyone have a happy Thanksgiving.